Good night, everyone, or good night. See there, we're done. Gloria, we're done.
You're on the right road there. Keep driving.
Welcome to tonight's City of Casa Grande study session. First item on our agenda tonight is the long-term community trails construction project.
Thank you, Mayor.
Yes, thank you, Mayor and Council. Happy to bring you the proposal for the community trail project and an update for you. As you know, this is part of the strategic plan. In the area of infrastructure, the goal is to increase the trail system 5% annually over the five years. The trail system is in the regional trail system master plan, which was embedded into the recent general plan that was voted on in May. The master plan shows potential trail locations, potential trailheads, cross-sections of trails. It's really a comprehensive plan that was presented quite a few years ago. This section of the trail, and we're titling it the Community Trail, would start at Rotary Park on Treacle, at 2220 North Treacle, and run one mile east along the Santa Cruz Wash to Peert Road. It would actually be, this line is depicted on the north side of the wash, but the trail is actually going to be constructed on the south side of the wash. Rotary Park is kind of tucked back in there.
Early over the weekend, yeah.
Just to give you a quick timeline of the project. It was a CIP project approved in last year's budget. We did do an RFQ process, RFP process, in November of 2020 in compliance with Title 34 of the Arizona revised statutes. During that process, Okanagan Trail Construction was selected in December. We did also have J2 Engineering do some work for us because the project does lie in a floodway, and so we need some specialized permitting for that. We did discuss this project with Transwestern Pipeline. Transwestern does have a gas line in that same area. They are on the south side, or excuse me, they're on the north side of the wash, and this project would be on the south side of the wash. And they gave us approval to proceed. In February, we did an aerial survey. Constructing in a floodway has some special considerations that we have to follow. And so typically, that would be remove and replace anything that we do. So we can't build it up higher or build it down lower. We're trying to keep it at grade. And that permit was approved in May of this year. And of course, the final proposal was sent to us in June, which leads us to this meeting here tonight. A couple renderings that I'll show you depict the trail. Our contractor titled it the Rotary Park Trail because that's how he's titled it. Again, we're going to be calling this the Community Trail. It would, this view is going onto the trail from Treacle Road. And there is, would be signage at each end of the trail. And you see up there a little farther, there's some wayfinding signage that would have some information about the trail and mileage and things like that.
Sorry. So Rotary Park's behind those bushes, right?
Correct.
And we're going to clean those up?
Yes.
Okay. So you can actually see the park and stuff?
Yeah, so that's kind of a different project that's going to run concurrent. The trailhead will be across the wash. Rotary Park is getting a new playground, which was previously approved in a previous city council meeting. In August, I believe, we're doing a bunch of tree trimming. That's already been scheduled. And there'll be some ADA parking and some sidewalks and everything to connect the trail to the trailhead. We do have similar trails in Casa Grande. If you've been over to the Carmack Knapp Park, we have a 14-foot-wide stabilized granite trail in that park. Those pictures are shown on the bottom right of your screen. It is bordered in concrete at Carmack Knapp Park. At the Recreation Center, we have an eight-foot-wide walking trail that leads west from the Recreation Center over to Colorado Street. It is also a stabilized granite surface, but it doesn't have a border on it. But we're, oh, this is another rendering that shows a little bit further to the east. The trail will meander somewhat. It won't be just a straight line. We'll use the existing trees and vegetation and topography to try to give it some interest and some unique flavoring. So the proposed trail will be an eight-foot-wide multi-use trail. These pictures just depict kind of what it would look like. It's a stabilized granite surface, which would be bordered in rock. The reason to border it in rock is because the desert can shift around quite a bit, and so the border would just give it some more stability. It is designed for walking, hiking, and biking. Equestrian would be in a future phase. And the equestrian use, if you see in the regional trail master plan, typically is not on the same trail as the walking and hiking and biking. It's typically run side by side, and it's more of a softer path. And the multi-use trail would be more of a firm path. There's a few other details in the project would include tree trimming and brush removal. Again, we're going to be using mostly natural existing vegetation. We would be exporting all the soil that we need there. Agave and entryway at both ends. And just to give it some definition and a good look. A riprap shoulder for stability. We will have a signage package and wayfinding signage in the project, but we will not have any electrical, lighting, irrigation, or major landscaping. I said no other amenities at this time. We'll probably have a few benches and things like that, but no major landscaping along the trail. This final rendering shows what it would look like looking back from Peert Road, looking back to the west. Right now, there's just a farm field and then the wash up there on the right side of the picture. On this side, we don't have parking planned. We need to look at what the city owns in that area. It would be pretty easy to construct some quick parking in that area, but the trailhead itself would be down at Rotary Park. So options for the future to continue the trail, obviously acquire easements and land agreements to extend the trail east and west. The trail would, I think my next picture shows it. This would be the extent of the trail over the next few years if we can continue the funding and continue the project. Mission Valley over there has an existing mile of trail that's concrete path. We would need to connect along a gas pipeline to get to Peert Road. And then the red would be what we're constructing in this project. The little red line for the rec center trail is already done. And then the blue lines would be future trails that we could do to extend the trail from Mission Valley all the way out to Dave White Park, if we're successful. And with that, I would stand for questions.
Hey, Steve, can you go to the back to the last picture with the home app?
Yep.
So I've been talking to the Elam Mining people, and they're just off the screen there to the north. And so if you would maybe reach out to them or I can give you contact information. They're interested. They're going to put a path. It's probably about a two-mile path around their mine next to a 40-foot berm. And it'd probably behoove us to use the same material so it all looks like it's all part of the same system.
Yep.
And they're interested in actually extending that pathway. So there may be some communication that we need to have with them to connect it to some of these future, you know, connecting points, like Dave White or Ed Hooper Park or something like that. Because they're right there.
Sure. And Paul Tyson, his group, we're working. There's other trail opportunities up to the north. So I'll have to get with Paul and see how that connects and extends.
All right. Great, thank you. Anybody else have some questions or comments? Go ahead.
Thank you. I'm trying to, there we go. Steve?
I'm going, who are you?
Just north of this project, there's a somewhat parallel wash. Is, a couple of questions. Is the source the same as far as the water source? And is there any plans for that in the future?
So are you saying right where the Mission Valley loop?
No.
Instead of, it's further north than that?
Between Peert and Treacle and about halfway to Rodeo Road. Yes. Yeah, there's another wash.
Sure. And I'd have to refer back to the master plan and then, and whether the city owns that property. The nice thing about this first mile of trail, we own 100% of the property.
Okay.
So that was the, for lack of a better term, the low-hanging fruit. We own all the property and have everything we need in that area. But we'll definitely review any area that's potential.
It appears that it has more water flowing in it than what we're looking at, the project. And there's a lot of vegetation. I mean, it's very, very green. I didn't know if this one takes, if this wash we're looking at will ultimately take the place of the other one. My assumption is somewhere the Santa Cruz splits and goes two paths, but I don't know that.
And I might have to defer to Terry, you know?
Yeah. Yeah, they converge back right down in here.
They converge back?
Yeah.
At Treacle?
Yeah, well, it goes around this development and then it kind of comes down here.
Okay.
It's part, this is part of the same drainage.
Anyway, just a thought, if it's going to remain there, that would sure make a nice loop.
Sure. And this wash that we'd be running alongside definitely does run water during certain times.
Yeah, I see it. Thank you.
It's got a lot of green grass in it when it gets wet. You could pasture cattle or something inside it. But the, it would be one of the things that could be done by equestrians, that part of the area. And that's what they're looking for is, they talked about riding that wash all the way out.
Sure.
Earlier times.
Matt, you have a question?
Yeah. One thing, Bobby, you were asking about that wash. And I know that we had a development with a long-term care type situation, and they were going to change that, actually. But we would probably work with the developers when they start doing that because that would be a nice loop there. But I'm sure we will at some point. But I am, this goes back, we had a meeting, what, like, maybe a year and a half ago? We've been working on trying to get to, we've had our master plan for probably 10 years. And it's finally coming, and I'm really excited about it. And the ultimate goal being, well, one of our goals was to get everything kind of go to the rec center and then out from there and then over to Dave White. And I'm just excited to see it finally happening, so. And I like the idea of what you said is, hey, this part we got, we own, so let's just get it going. So you got to start somewhere, and it's a great place.
Yeah. And the rec center trail, if you see, there is a spur trail, it's called, the north-south trail that runs up there and connects. That's definitely in the works with planning and zoning.
All right. Thank you.
Donna?
Stephen, I know that we said that we were not going to have any lighting and electrical. And my only concern is because of the safety in that, you know, that area. Will this be, you know, I know some of our parks are closed. You know, they have hours that, you know, you're supposed to not be there. Will this be included in the language on the signs and stuff?
Yes, so the typical hours would close at 11:00 PM and reopen at 5:00 AM. And we could easily on the, I think we have some solar lighting right now at Rotary Park. We could easily add a couple solar lights at the beginning of the trail, right there at Rotary Park and Treacle Road. It's just not included in the financial package that I'll present later to the council.
Thank you.
Lisa, do you have any questions?
Actually, I was going to comment on the safety and lighting also. So, yeah, I think it would be great if we could possibly add some of the solar lighting. And of course, having signage that shows, you know, when it's open. And have you gotten with the police department? Are there any concerns about monitoring that area at all? Or do we, are we pretty good with, you know, what we're going to do right now?
You know, we haven't gotten specifically with the police department on any issues. Rotary Park will be, become more highly used when we get it all finished. There's a lot of little smaller projects that are running concurrently with this, including an upgraded parking lot, you know, tree trimming and shrub, taking out low-hanging shrubs, a new playground, a new remada, another little shade structure. So I think you're going to see a lot more highly-used visibility there, which will obviously improve usage from our patrons, so.
Great. Mr. Powell?
There's a.
Thank you, Steve.
Go ahead.
You're good, go.
There's a drainage that comes down parallel to I-17, or I-10, that's right next to it. When they have flooding, it loads up pretty good. And it ends up coming out there on Peert and actually toward the Rotary. And the Santa Cruz just goes all the way on out past Frito Lay. And actually creates riparian areas out there that are constantly wet. And, but one of the things that it, for equestrians, they kind of like openness and getting out and doing it. And you wouldn't have to pamper them as much as long as you had a trail that was not concrete, that was softer material. That would be fun for them to be able to leave rodeo grounds and make a trip out quite a ways and back.
Sure.
Any other questions, comments? All right, thank you, Steve.
Thank you.
All right, next item on the agenda is our presentation from the Chamber of Commerce on the community marketing organization. Larry, do you want to set this up or is Renee going to take it?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, thank you for the opportunity. As the mayor and council may recall, there was some discussion related to the formation of a community marketing organization approximately two years ago. We were, in fact, in line to work with the Chamber of Commerce to create the organization and to essentially fund it through a proposed bed tax option. When the pandemic, when COVID pandemic commenced, we elected to put, essentially pause that particular effort and essentially wait for a period of time where we saw some level of recovery. And obviously, we're beginning to see that. We've seen that in ourselves taxed through the accommodation and the like. And so we've been, myself and Renee Luzon Ben have been having discussions about an opportune time to bring it back to the council. So this is a bit of a restart. You're going to see some of the same slides that you may have seen two years ago. There's a lot of similarities to the proposal that was introduced then. But with that, I'll turn it over to Renee.
It's in the present, it's in our presentation. Yeah, it was in the online file. It was part of our packet.
Oh, now I got a pointer. Okay, I'm sorry, I apologize. I thought that I didn't need to. I have a printout of it. It's actually in a thumb drive right on my desk where I left it.
It's on the study session. Presentation.
I could probably get my phone and send it to you again.
We could probably pull it up on our computers. Trying to get the Suns game, come on. Got to have priorities here.
There you go.
There you go. Yeah.
Okay, that's actually, can you increase the size?
Single page.
There you go. Thank you. And thank you for having me back again. Mr. Raines is correct. This has, this actually, the last time I presented this was January of '20. And the mayor also discussed it at the Biz Outlook luncheon in May of '19. And I think Rhonda Kirfi had brought it to city council. So you're seeing similar information based on what we had discussed then. But I gave it a new look just to keep it fresh for you. So I hope you appreciate a nice morning view of Casa Grande Mountain, or from Casa Grande Mountain. I'm glad to be back here to talk about this. And hopefully, from here, we'll see some forward momentum. Next slide, please. So, marketing Casa Grande. City marketing refers to a marketing strategy where a specific city is promoted. Goals include attracting tourists to the area and/or designed to attract business investment or and/or migration to the city. Generally, the intention is for marketing efforts to make our city stand out from other cities. Current state. The city markets to recruit new business to the area and markets its programs and resources to its residents. The Chamber, which is also designated by the Arizona Office of Tourism, as an Arizona Visitor Information Center, we fill in as a destination marketing organization. So we have those three organizations there. But the Chamber promotes its member businesses, its events, and its programs. And in 2021, kicked off a rediscover Casa Grande marketing program. While there is communication across those organizations, there's not a collaborative and coordinated effort currently. So there's an opportunity. Next slide, please. If you look at that dark triangle in the center, that's what's important. That represents the community marketing office. Create under the operations of the Greater Casa Grande Chamber of Commerce an integration and collaboration of the city, the Chamber, and marketing to meet the goals of all the organizations, developing a roadmap or a marketing plan, and have intentional marketing of Casa Grande. Operation, as I said, would fall under the Chamber. Next slide. The creation of a CMO, which is a phrase I'll use now, is going to take stakeholders, an organization of an advisory board. A variety of individuals, organizations, and groups can be involved in the city marketing efforts. These organizations may have members or stakeholders, including local businesses and attractions, hotels, and can engage in city marketing on a more unilateral basis, promoting the city to attract customers. The group will champion the interests of the city. There'll be seven to nine members. And if you look at the list of stakeholders, the representation would include from the city, an elected official, employee, Chamber of Commerce organization, the downtown Main Street organization, industry partners, including hotels and private businesses, restaurants. Bars, entertainment, and such. Executing the plan would be delegated to the CMO. Next slide, please. Thank you. This is a budget that was originally presented in the very first slide presentation. Nothing has changed because we're still going off those estimates based from 2018 bed tax. Of the budget, estimating $360,000, $200,000 would be targeting all the marketing activities. Print, digital, and public relations outreach, including but not limited to branding. Some of that's already been set into motion. And that is, we'll step back to that in a few minutes. Print materials, tourism brochures throughout the Arizona Office Visitor Centers and Arizona Airport visitor kiosks, billboard messaging, social media marketing, Instagram, Facebook, and Twitter, public relations, CMO visitor website linked to the Chamber and city website. And then some other funds, $20,000 estimated to put towards either city beautification or building a signature event. $80,000 for CMO staff salaries benefits. And $60,000 administrative expenses, office and conferences. So the next slide, as we go through each one, these represent some actions, some activities that are already started and in place, and the potential of what can be. Through the CARES Act grant, the Chamber did redesign the website and designed it to be more of a community website. The first dropdown tab other than Explore is Tourism. There is, we worked with our local digital marketing firm Blossom Digital to make it local and exciting so the sense of arrival to the website makes people want to explore more. And if they scroll down, they'll get to the stamps about the sub-brand, live it, love it, work it, build it, and park it. The website invites the visitor to, and residents to rediscover Casa Grande. It has been targeted with the marketing campaign to reach outside of Casa Grande and outside of Arizona to engage people in the different sub-pages of the website. The future potential of the website as a CMO grows would be what's next? Will more hotels come into town? We know of two. And as more hotels come into town and other activities are taking place, maybe there'll be a piggyback of another software program or another design to allow for people to explore the dates they want to come visit, to find out if there's hotel availability on those dates without having to go through Expedia. There's some websites that have that. Connect meeting planners with potential, like their requests and information get funneled through DMO websites to the hoteliers themselves. So there's a lot of opportunity to expand and grow. And just the video that you see when you land on the Chamber's website right now is currently featured on Arizona Drive Guide Magazine's website. And it's the first one you see. So, pretty neat. So anyone who visits Drive Guide gets to visit Casa Grande. Next slide. This is just one of the multiple ads that were created and targeting various populations with certain behaviors or needs, depending on if it was the Parket. This was targeting people who like to go RVing in the Southwest and such. There's another one, Build It, that targets manufacturers through LinkedIn in Californians, in mid to Southern California. So each of these campaigns was targeting people to get more interest in Casa Grande. So there's things that we can do like that. And we can even hyper-target even more to populations based on behaviors for using software through the Oracle Cloud. You can find out who likes to golf and who likes to eat tacos and target those populations with digital messaging. The next slide, please. This is fun because we did this. Through some surplus funds, unexpended but planned for through the CARES Act dollars, we co-opted on several ads in Drive Guide. It's a half-page ad they gave us for Smoke and Deal. So we've been promoting our neon sign park. Drive Guide comes out quarterly. And when we think about what the wish list is for the budget, we could be planning these in advance and working out our campaigns instead of trying to figure out if we still have wiggle room. Next slide. I think this one the mayor will like. I actually, last March, had meetings with people from Clear Channel about billboard I actually, last March, had meetings with people from Clear Channel about billboards in and around Casa Grande and on I-10 Northwest and such, and held on to that for far too long, and now have more information coming to me, because there is opportunity of getting people to think Casa Grande. Where is it? Why should I go there? And to explore Casa Grande. So, for people, if they were driving by, it would remind them, this is the time to get off, and this would be the best exit off of our trip on Interstate 10. Or if they were driving on I-10 West, and they're like almost to the 101 in the West Valley, they see that one that says, if you were living in Casa Grande, you'd already be home. Next slide, please. This is more opportunity. Arizona Office of Tourism produces the, and I have, I have these, you can pass around for people to look at if you'd like.
Has joined the meeting.
The Arizona Tourism Visitor Guide, Arizona Office of Tourism, they produce 400,000 of these guides a year, and they distribute them to visitor centers like ours, and we have them on our racks, and they, you know, there's over 65 visitor centers in the state. And they also distribute the maps. There's 400,000 maps that they produce a year. So that is an opportunity for us to not only have our own information out there, but to be included in marketing information from the Arizona Office of Tourism. And to the right, you see something we're actually going to be moving into is developing our first visitor guide, so that rather than send out an eight-and-a-half or eight-by-ten directory, which costs $8 to mail, and if somebody who's interested in coming for a long weekend, we can send them the piece that's most appropriate for their visit, and give them the information they're looking for. So these are just some of the fun things that we can be doing. Yes, sir?
Renee, isn't that the piece also that goes in the visitor, at the visitor guide locations?
Yes.
The smaller one?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
So they, those people who are traveling around the state of Arizona might work their way from one visitor center to another and pick up that Casa Grande Visitor Guide in Cholo, and make that a place they want to go while they're in Arizona as well. So next slide. How do we pay for this? As Larry said, with the bed tax. Paid by, the proposed funding would increase our current bed tax from 2% to 5%, dedicating that difference of 3% for the marketing office. The bed tax is paid by the visitors, the hotel guests. It's not, it's not a charge incurred by the hotels, it's by the guests. And an example of what that would look like, if it's $100 a night for a room, that's a $3 bed tax for that individual to pay. Currently, ours-
I think if it's $100, it'd be $5, right?
Well, that increases $3.
Yeah, okay.
Sorry. So currently, the 2% bed tax serves and will continue to support youth and youth services. And in most of Maricopa County, the bed tax is already 5%, and in Pima County, it's 6%. And so we have an opportunity here. Next slide. What is the benefit to the community? Casa Grande will be on the map. That's the goal, is that using various marketing media, is to put Casa Grande on a map, to make it the type of place that when people are coming from the north, northeast, and they say, we're going to Arizona, instead of saying, are you going to Sedona and Scottsdale, they're gonna say, are you gonna be going to Casa Grande? Because that's, that's what we want, is to be like that common phrase in other states that people come to visit. Also, the community of choice for people to come and live, places to stay and play. Next steps, next slide. Study session with city council, here we are. The support letter from the hoteliers, we actually completed that in October of 19, and the mayor has had those letters, the petition. Council action and public hearing, hopefully, third quarter of 2021. Implementation in the fourth quarter of '21, and the CMO opens. So this timeline is based on the calendar year, not the city's fiscal year, nor the Chamber's calendar year. So when we talk about third and fourth quarter, we're talking about 2021. And next slide, any questions?
Anybody have any questions? Matt?
Couple of questions, comments. You know, I stayed at nice day hotels. Again, we've had this conversation before, but just a couple of weeks ago, and I think that the rate where I stayed was almost 6%, just for some type of tax like this. So I don't think that's much of a factor for people choosing, and I'm sure you guys have studied that as well.
Well, there was actually, well, that is, yes, that has been part of the discussion. And there was also, and I have it here, a proposal that there was an actual study done by a consultant and presented to city council October of 2017, that addressed some of that as well. It's really, I don't know, but when people are out to spending either disposable income on vacation, or other people's income, traveling for business, they don't really look at that dollar amount. They probably look at what their per diem rates are allowable, and then after that, they don't think about it. And $3 a night is nominal.
And another, yeah, another thing, I don't know if we can do this, but I know we were talking about getting the Buxton program for the city, which is very targeted information. So that, I don't know if we can help that with this project or not. It might, as you were talking about targeting people who like golf and tacos, like Steve, I saw him perk up over there. But, you know, the Buxton program that Richard talked to us about, actually, is very targeted like that. So I don't know if we can help with this, or if it's legal to use it that, I mean, not legal, but if we're licensed to do it that way. But that would be very handy, I would think.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, and Councilman Herman, to your specific question, the Buxton report obviously is a very data-driven type of a model and analysis that the city has included in our fiscal year '22 budget. So the mayor and council will be taking action on that budget tonight. But ultimately, Buxton does represent both governments, as well as the retail side of businesses, and establishing data and data points. Renee and I did have just a very brief conversation a couple of weeks ago about the fact that if approved, we would want the Chamber to be very active in that process. And I do see that there would be some collaborative efforts between the businesses, the business communities in Casa Grande, and with the Buxton report and the data that was, would be available to us through that analysis.
All right. And then, lastly, I think, for me, is that this would also help small businesses a lot downtown as well, because most people that use this type of travel want to see what's here in Casa Grande, right? And I know you're focusing on that with the Neon Sign Park and everything, and working with Main Street, but I just think that's great, because right now, we need everybody to be driven as much as they can to those places, too, and then hopefully-
Well, when you think about the visitor guide, and it would be including businesses that fall into that category of, where am I going to stay? Where am I going to dine? Where am I going to golf? Where am I going to spend my time when I'm in this town for a week, two weeks, five days, something like that? And we really want to make sure that they have the information coming in and enjoy themselves. And quite frankly, on a regular basis, we have people coming in saying, I'm just driving through, or I'm staying in Hila Bend in an RV, and it's June. What can I do for a day here? And it was a Monday, and like, oh. Not as many things to do on Monday as there are the rest of the week.
And then the marketing piece, too, because specifically in my business, we get a lot of people, you know, that we go through a lot of Chamber maps and books at our place. And just one more good tool, like, you know, people want to know where to eat, where it looks, and to have a nice little piece just to hand out.
Right.
And they love the books, too, but, you know, just easy to use and everything. So I think it's a real great idea.
Well, thank you. Just so you know, that opening slide was sunrise at Casa Grande Mountain. November, several years ago. It's a nice view. Any other questions?
You know, Renee, I'm so excited to see this move forward, because I know that we've been stagnant for a while. My only question is that, you know, because of everything that's happened over the past year and a half, and I know that I was at the meeting where a lot of the hotels were there, and they were so excited about it, have we circled back around to them, to reengage them at all?
I wanted to do so around the timeline of this meeting. I think that that would, I don't want to lose any momentum, but I also didn't want to be premature. Okay.
I'd make sure I'm on. The council action that will be required later on in the year, and this is probably more for Larry, but will that actually raise the tax rate? And my other question is, how does all this fit within the structure of the city? My assumption is the CMO will answer to the board. Is that correct? And so my related question is, does that, does that board adopt a set of rules, or how does, how does that work? And by the way, I'm all in favor of it. I mean, I've been excited about it. I'm sorry it had to be put on hold because, because of the pandemic, but, and probably, Larry, I should ask, does all that come up for discussion later on in the year? Maybe I don't need to ask that tonight.
And, Mr. Mayor, Mayor Pro Tim Huddleston, let me answer the question related to the decisions that the mayor and council will be, the policy decisions the mayor and council will be considering. You're absolutely right, it is the actual tax increase to this particular category, the accommodations category within our tax structure. That would come to the mayor and council by way of an ordinance and a recommendation by staff, as normal ordinances would transpire. Then ultimately, there's a statutory requirement of a notice that is necessary to allow the businesses to begin to make the adjustment before the tax can be collected. And so, again, as Ms. Ben has, Luzon Ben has said this evening, we were wanting to reintroduce this to the council, make sure it was something that you wanted us to pursue, and ultimately, we'll begin to work on the proposed increase in the accommodations tax.
Okay.
And I'll let Renee answer perhaps a little bit more of the structure. There is some involvement, but at least from, from my perspective, when we've had this dialogue in the past, both internally as well as with, with the elected officials, it was always my understanding that it would be, that the city would enter into an engagement, a professional services engagement contract with the Chamber of Commerce to manage these particular monies. Similar to what we do with our partnership agreements today, the mayor and council are considering them this evening, I believe. So they would be responsible for meeting a variety of expectations through that agreement, and in exchange for that, we would be providing the funding through that bed tax collection.
Okay. And where, where would it be housed?
As far as the physical-
At the Chamber?
575 North Marshall Street.
Okay, okay.
Renee, you want to talk a little-
I didn't know if it'd be here at City Hall or at the Chamber.
That would, that would be probably an appropriate location for, there is, looking at staffing, not necessarily a need to hire an executive director of a community marketing office when you have a chamber director, but instead to bring in really qualified staff, a marketing and event specialist, because those are the two key activities that are going to take place. Seeking, evaluating the appropriate mixed media campaign, and putting together a strategy with all those examples I included in the slideshow, as well as evaluating the effectiveness of it. So, starting with one staff, and I know at one time, there was maybe two, one at full-time, one part-time proposed, but that staffing would be looking for someone with that caliber to come in and, and just hit the ground running.
Yeah, you'd probably have like a manager of the CMO.
Yeah.
And the manager would answer to Renee, for example. And then there's a board, the board could be seven or nine.
Right.
And we're still kind of deciding what that number is, and it would have two, two city personnel on it, one elected and one, like the PIO, for example, because she would deal with the, with the communication.
The Chamber is currently, we have our bylaws committee reviewing our bylaws, because it's been too long. So we're in that process right now, but in the big picture, you know, I have an example in that, in that report that was presented in 2017 of the bylaws from the Sedona Chamber, and they are still in agreement and operating with a partnership with the city of Sedona. And, in fact, to the tune of this past year, it's been about asking them to scale back on the marketing, because so many people were misusing public lands, but that won't happen here. I think that our current process in the bylaws, and also internally, we're reviewing our policies and ensuring that they're current, and expanding on them in places where we don't have policies on certain things, to be a more efficient organization when this takes off.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I would like to go back, I think, to, I visited with Richard and some others and Polly about, how do we get people to go downtown? How do we get them there? And the, you know, I think her age group, there's really, very bland downtown. And I know we just had a building open up for the secondhand store, it used to be the old Penny's Building. We had, next to that, that empty place there, was the restaurant that burned down. And it had, it had people parking and walking three and four blocks to get down there and not complaining or thinking anything about it. They had music sometimes, they had, they had a bar, they had a restaurant. And we need to have something like that downtown for people to go to. And until we do, I don't, I don't see us making a lot of progress with the Main Street area. And it's there, and we can do it, if we would, if we would do some, invest some money or some time in trying to figure out to get, get somebody in that building, a tenant that would do something that would be recreational, or food, or whatever. I know you can almost never have enough restaurants. And that would be an ideal location for one, and they could have a bar or whatever at that, at that location. But I was hoping that that Work America across the street building would have come open to the city, and that we would have taken it, and-
It's coming back open.
Is it coming back open? Bless you. The, that would be an ideal place to have a steakhouse and have some other things that have been asked for, to have a bar, what do they call it?
Food court.
No, not the bars.
Bar.
No.
Brew pub.
What, where they brew their own beer?
Brew pub, micro, microbrewery.
Microbrewery, yes, okay. You can see I'm right up to speed on that.
I agree with you.
You know, a microbrewery, a restaurant, and it's picking up, you could have some other things in that building, if that is coming up, again. And I think that part of what we have to do as a city council, is be aware of what we could do with some of the buildings that are becoming vacant downtown, to draw more people in, to give people reason to go downtown, and to enjoy themselves, to walk around. Marge has walked people around there for years, and they like the historical part of it. And I, I just hope that we can look into those kind of things, because, as I say, if it stays bland, it is bland, and it doesn't really, you know, doesn't do what we want to see done. And our downtown, I was in Prescott over the weekend, and Prescott is, is hard to compete with. It's got all kind of stuff there. But they've done a lot of work, the city has. And when I went to school up there, it wasn't like it is now. There's a lot more restaurants and microbreweries and stuff for young people, and that type of thing. And I was wondering why in the world we couldn't do that, or at least think about doing it, or trying to do it in Casa Grande, Arizona.
I agree. I sat in on several of the general plan meetings, and there was a presentation by the city of Chandler about the development of the downtown Chandler area. And I think the biggest message I heard about their development, it was, a lot of it was by intention. It was by design. So they was kind of identifying and putting together a wish list of things they wanted to see be in that area, and then work to make that happen. So that way, you know, you have your, your steakhouse, you have the DC Steakhouse, and around the corner, you've got Handlebar Jakes. And you've got the other place, there's the Italian restaurant around the other end of the square. But people, there's little shops in between, and people meander from one to the other. And they've also, in the expansion of that area, it has also been about bringing in multifamily living, walking distance from the downtown, and having wider walking paths. So there's a lot of intention involved, but I think it starts with a lot of big discussions.
You know, one of the things that I found out, I, I knew you were looking at Chandler, and I was in the meeting when they, when they gave us the criteria on it. But most of the people that are up there live in the condos, or in the apartments, or that type of thing. And I drove around on a Saturday, good weather, good day, one guy on a bicycle, one guy walking, and one guy going in a bar. And that was all that was happening down there. I don't know that, that they do as well as they, that people think they do. I don't know that, that they do as well as they, that people think they do. The apartments and the condos are nice because the people like to live there, but that closed clear on out south.
I think also in that discussion, one of the people in the meeting said, "But yeah, we don't want to be like Chandler because we're Casa Grande." I mean, I agree with you, but it was what the important message was, is that a group of people sat around and said, "What do we want here? What is our vision for downtown?" And, and I know there's a Main Street board and there's a Chamber board, but more collaboration between the, the different groups and cross-communication and then put the wish list together and start working on recruiting-
All right.
-X, Y, and Z to our community.
Any other questions on the CMO?
Just, just one more comment.
On the CMO? On the CMO?
I know, one more fast comment.
I have, I have a question, Mayor.
All right, Lisa, Mr. Powell has one more comment. He promises it'll be short.
Okay.
No, go ahead first, Lisa, I'm a gentleman.
Okay, uh, thank you. Uh, please, thank you, Renee. Of course, I, I'm looking forward to, I'm looking forward on this. And I think, you know, you talked a little bit about the bylaws and the processes and my, my connection was disconnected, so I may have missed this, but my question is, I know the CMO will, will mostly be doing promoting of the city events, activities, things like that, but we talked about, you know, the, the businesses' opportunities, you know, to, to expand their marketing, you know, to visitors. And I, I wanted to see how you're going to separate, you know, chamber, I, I just want to make sure that we have non-Chamber members that are getting just as much consideration. I don't know what the percentage is of businesses and services and everyone that you have with the chamber. Obviously, our company is part of your chamber, but I, I just want to make sure since this is a city, you know, more of a collaboration with the city, that we are making sure that there's a little separation on, you know, it, or making, they're making sure that we're including, you know, all business services, everything when, when we're doing any type of marketing of, of any of those types of, you know, businesses.
I, I-
Does that make sense?
That makes a lot of sense, Lisa. Good an A+ on that.
I, I, I think, I think in the big-
I just wanted to, to mention-
Let her answer her question.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
That's okay. I just, I, I apologize if I talked over you. I just wanted to clarify that when we're marketing the city, I think I've heard the phrase, incoming tides raises all ships. You know, we're marketing the city and, and not necessarily specific businesses from the CMO standpoint. It will be about the community. If businesses choose to participate, let's say next year we produce 25,000 or 50,000 visitor guides, they can still participate in the visitor guide. We would have to come up with some type of structure for that that we don't have in place now. So there's going to be some things that we learn as we go, but it's, it certainly is not our intention to not represent the whole city with the CMO. That's the goal, is to represent the whole city.
Yeah, whether, whether you're a member of the chamber or not.
For example, during the pandemic, we opened and we're still maintaining that website for, through next April at least, is the Casa Grande's Open for Business website. And it didn't matter if somebody was a member or not. Now hopefully, some people might want to become a member, just saying.
Did that answer your question, Lisa?
Yes, no. And I, and I, I wasn't implying that you guys wouldn't include all businesses. I just want to make sure when, you know, when, when different questions, you know, make sure that, understand that we are promoting cities, services, that, that sort of, but just make, as you're putting together policies and everything, I'm sure you're already taking that into consideration, but I just wanted to make sure.
Of course.
You're right on. Thank you. Mr. Powell, what would you like, what would you like to say?
One final, the Circle K's that are being built now, like the one on Florence Boulevard, if you could talk them into one downtown, there's no place to get gas for four or five miles for the downtown area. The gas stations used to be there, they're not there anymore. And that would be a big deal. They, they attract a lot of people and they also sell food and, and all the different things that they do. And I talked to Richard about, I know he can recruit anybody, about trying to recruit Circle K and maybe a Walgreens and something else. If you had three good businesses that people came to once a week or more, it would really liven up the downtown. It would make a big difference.
Thank you.
All right. Any other questions for Renee? Okay, seeing none. Thank you, Renee. Thank you to the Chamber Board too for being here tonight and also Blossom Media. Thank you, Brian. No other questions and we'll stand adjourned for about five minutes and we'll start at Thank you, Renee.
Oh, yeah.
I hope you have extras of those because that'd be easy to lose, wouldn't it?
I know.
That's the way it works.
Like my TV.